My name is Mayor Nick Madoff. I'm from Runnymede. We have some special guests here this evening. I'll introduce them in a second, but I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. This will be our final. Thank you very much. I'm thrilled and honored to be selected for this town hall meeting. Glad that John came out. Do see some eagles in attire out there, so we'll get started right away. I just want to introduce our guest this evening. We have Freeholder Director Luca Pelli. We have a US Congressman from the 1st District, Donald Morcross. From the 5th District, we have our State Senator Nielsen Cruz Perez. And also from the 5th District, Gilbert Whit Wilson. I'm going to turn it over to Gilbert. I do have my counsel here. I may not know too well. I have Council President, Ms. Patty Passwell. Please stand up. For all the residents here from Runnymede, you should know our Speaker. I have Councilman Mike Root. And Councilman Bob. Let's thank all of you for being here today. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We're very happy to be here in Runnymede tonight for this town hall meeting, which began about three or four months ago. This is our third one. And it's a real pleasure to go out to municipalities with every level of government presence to be able to answer any questions you may have and hear your concerns about government. Before we begin, I just wanted to introduce some of my colleagues from the Board of Freeholders who are here tonight. Deputy Director Ed McDonald is here. This is Deputy Director. Freeholder Michelle Gentec-Mayer. Freeholder John Young. I think that's it. So who here knows what a Freeholder is? Just the Freeholders. Okay. It's a question we get often. I just want to open up before I introduce our other guest. I'm going to turn the mic over to them. The Board of Freeholders is given the charge of overseeing the county government. And we're called Freeholders. It's a historical term that goes back 200 years because you couldn't be a Freeholder unless you owned land free and clear, then you can be a Freeholder. Hence the term. In other states, it's called County Commissioner. We're very happy to be able to oversee our Parks Department. We oversee, I think it's 800 miles of roads, county roads. Jail, the county jail, Camden County College, Camden County Improvement Authority. You know, there's a lot of different functions we perform. Perhaps most importantly, 911 is a county shared service arrangement run by the county. And that's probably one of the most important functions that we have. We also inspect restaurants. We have a health department. So you can actually go online and check out the reports on the restaurant you might be eating at. So there's a lot of good things we do. But most importantly, we work with municipalities like the one here in Runnymede to try to make good things happen on behalf of the people of Camden County. Some of our highlights over the past few months. First, some of you may have read about Norman's Law. That was a law that we passed banning the sale of puppies that are born into puppy mills here in Camden County. So there are no more puppies. That was definitely a goal by the Freeholder match. Just last week, we announced something called Operation Sal. Operation Save a Life, where we are actually providing treatment for those folks who are addicted to heroin and other drugs and receive Narcan treatment to save their lives. So what happens is, and so far, I have to put a real shout out here to law enforcement in Camden County. So far this year, police officers in Camden County have saved over 330 lives by giving Narcan. So what this program does now is to actually do what's called a warm handoff, to have the addicts provided with some treatment, the treatment provided that we've contracted with here in Camden County. So once there's an emergency room, and all four hospitals are participating in this, once there's an emergency room, we're going to try to get them treated. So we announced that program last week and also gave awards to the over 300 police officers who have saved lives here in Camden County. We also in the midst of doing some renovations to Cooper River Park, which is one of our most populated, but mostly used parks. And we're also beginning to renovate the gateway into Camden County from Deptford to Runnymede, right here in Leasham. I think the contracts would be awarded. That's something. That was an idea the government brought here. It's a great idea, and it's going to be a very pleasant gateway into Runnymede and Camden County once that project is completed. So it's been my honor to serve on the Freeholder Board for all these years. But what makes it very special is to have leaders in Trenton and in Washington to help with some of the initiatives that we try to accomplish here in Camden County. Our Congressman Donald Morcross is someone who served us well in Trenton. While he was in Trenton, he passed some reforms in public safety, in education, all of which have had a tremendous impact in making Camden County a safer county and providing greater opportunities for education for people of all backgrounds. And he also was key in the development of the Economic Opportunity Act of 2013, which will result in the creation of literally thousands of jobs here in Camden County and a much larger base. So we're just so very fortunate to have Donald Morcross as our Congressman. Thanks.
Good evening. It's good to be back in Runnymede. And certainly Nielsen and Whip are doing a great job. And they had the 5th District, which was home for, I guess, just close to six years and enjoyed every moment of it. First, I want to apologize. I assume most people here are football fans. If not, they would be watching the Giants-Eagles, which is the number one rivalry in the entire NFL. Our staff came up with this date, went right on ball. They knew that was there. Just kidding. Just kidding. But the mayor council, who have always been leading, particularly when it came to, or it came to the treatment of our veterans who are returning home. Thank you for what you do. We have great events each year. We certainly appreciate it. November 8th last year was Election Day. I was sworn in to the US House of Representatives four days later with my grandstand standing by my side. It was a remarkable moment. Because it wasn't too long ago that I was working with the tools as an electrician. I decided to go to that other four-year school that's called Napropeship. Then went on to Camden County College, and my career went on from there. The reason I tell you this is it's about diversity. You ask most people, what do they think about Congress? How is it working? Generally, not going to hear very good remarks coming back. Some of it is well deserved. And certainly, that's the way I felt going in. And I made the commitment that if I was elected, I'm not going to contribute to the problem. I'm going to try to find a solution. I was sworn in to the Senate in New Jersey at the same time Governor Christie was sworn in. And nobody was going to suggest that we're on the same page when it comes to many of the important policy issues. But the one thing that we were able to do is something that the founders of our country understood when they put together the Constitution and the Congress. It's called compromise. Anybody who's married certainly knows what that word means and probably on a daily basis. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but you always get together. That seems to have been lost to many of those who are serving in Congress. And you can tell that we had Pope Francis down two weeks ago, who came in and spoke to a joint session of Congress. First time ever that the Holy Father has done that. And it was a remarkable moment. Everybody was excited and just thrilled to hear his message. And a reporter talked to me shortly thereafter and says, "You think this will make a difference? Being the eternal optimist?" I said, "I hope it does." Unfortunately, 24 hours later, Speaker Boehner resigned. That was only the start of it. Because shortly thereafter, the second person in charge, a gentleman named Harvey, who's a great guy, I think we could work well with him. As they were about to go into the election, he abruptly withdrew. So you need to understand Speaker of the House, we've all heard about it. It's the third most powerful position in the United States of America. President, Vice President, he's the third one in charge if something goes wrong. It's an incredibly powerful position and one with awesome responsibility. The reason I'm telling you this is just to get a clue of what is going on. And we're now going into a season without a leader that are now referred to as the counter of chaos. Okay, sounds something out of Batman. But let me tell you what it means to you in this room. There are three major items that historically have not been major issues in a bipartisan way to pass. The first one comes out October 29th. You know certainly how important this bill is. It's a Highway Trust Fund. It's what is funding our $1.3 billion intersection down here at 42 and 295. And if we don't renew that, that stops. This was never a partisan issue in the history of Congress. It now is. They're doing this small stopgap funding that take it three months, four months. Anybody owns a business, anybody does budget, understands. It's tough to plan ahead when you don't know what's going to happen in two months from now. That predictability is gone. And when we want more efficiency of government, we're actually getting less. Then November 30th. The full faith and credit of the US government is at stake. It's called the debt limit. Routinely, it is raised to incorporate those dollars that are owed. Now, if we do not pass that, all the bondholders who have credit here in the United States, the Chinese government being the largest, they will get paid before our servicemen will. That's how bad it's getting. And literally, we won't be able to spend another dime. Only to be overdrawn by December 11th. That's where government shutdown comes again. There is no leader because Brian has indicated that he doesn't want to go into that position of power to be able to work out a deal to compromise because he won't have the backing of his own caucus because he gave in, even before they knew what the deal was. Now you can tell I'm a little perturbed at this. Government works for you. Sometimes it doesn't work real well, but think of all the things it does. When you go out to traffic light here in Black Forest Pike, and it's green, you're hoping the government has red going the other way, that you're fired, you're policemen. This is all good things the government does. The men and women that serve in our armed forces. Now, I served on the Armed Forces or the Armed Services Committee. And we had a brief last week, and I bring this up as just a dedication of the men and women. I sit on a committee called Emerging Threats. I describe it to people, it's the one that you serve on, and when you go to bed at night, you keep one eye open. You can imagine what we're facing as a country. And it is no accident that we have not had a major attack since 9/11. So we get briefed on what is going on around the world. And I'm telling you right now, the reason you're sitting here is because these brave men and women who will never be recognized outside of their small forces because of what they do. It's what government does best. It keeps us safe. I could go, obviously, forever, but I just want to point out a couple of things that we're here for. I ran a small nonprofit called the OSS 20 years ago. And what that was instilled to do is to bring community services out to the public. We had an 800 number. You now know it as 211. We started it. And we had different levels of the community services. The federal government was talking to the county, talking to state. And that was the concept why we're here tonight. Myself, representing the federal government, Lou from the county, Nielsen from the state, Whip from the state, and obviously, the mayor and county from the local, so that you can ask or inquire about questions. And you're not saying, "Go to the next guy, we don't have the answer." Now, we might not have them all tonight, but we've got lots of staff here to try to address your questions. And we have a great staff that all of them together have 125 years of experience. And I want to read a letter because I thought it was absolutely phenomenal that we were able to help. And this came from a woman who wanted us to know that we never knew that the services were actually there to help the little guy. Trying to work through the system alone was proving impossible. Your extremely prompt assistance has made all the difference in the world. This isn't a campaign letter. This is what serving in government is all about. Helping those who need the help. Thank you very much.
Thank you Congressman. Our next speaker is the Senator from the 5th District, Nielsen Cruz Perez, who began her political career in the Assembly. I think she was, were you the first Latina elected to the New Jersey Assembly? So she's made history in the Assembly. Now she's moved up to the Senate, where she's representing the interests of the 5th District in an outstanding fashion. She's a very dedicated public servant, and we're very happy to have her here tonight. Senator Nielsen Cruz Perez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Senator Nielsen Cruz Perez, and I'm proud to continue to serve you after 15 years representing you as an Assemblywoman in the General Assembly. I want to take this moment to thank Congressman Donald Morcross and Freeholder Director Luca Pelli for bringing all levels of government under one roof to address their issues. Thank you Mayor Nick Madoff for hosting this special event. I want to congratulate Congressman Morcross in his recent leadership appointment as Assistant Whip in the House of Representatives. You are glad for your turn, Linda. So we need that leadership in Washington, and congratulations. Now we know we're in good hands. Let me tell you about what committees I'm sitting in Trenton. I sit on the Senate Economic Growth Committee as a vice chair. This is a very, very important committee because in this committee, we address the issues affecting the businesses and the economy in New Jersey. I've been working with the shareholders of commerce. I've been working with the local businesses. I've been working with the people in the community to try to create key legislation, not to only keep the businesses in New Jersey, but also bring in new businesses in New Jersey because we need the jobs. I also sit in the Transportation Committee, and I don't have to tell you how important it is to keep safe routes. It's not only vital for our economy, but it's also for the safety and the well-being of our family and friends. And the last committee I'm serving is a committee that I'm very proud to serve, is the Committee of Military and Veterans Affairs. In this committee, I have sponsored many pieces of legislation to protect our veterans. One of them that I'm very proud is the Stolen Ball Act, which will make a crime for someone who tried to impersonate a veteran. Believe it or not, people will do that just to gain services and goods that are provided to our veterans. Do we have any veterans in the room? Please stand up to me, Linda. Thank you all so much for your service. I also want to recognize police and firefighters in the room that work very hard to keep us safe. Thank you for yourselves, good. And just to let you know, the best ideas come from the people. Linda can tell you that. So we're looking forward to hear your concerns, to hear ideas, so we can propose legislation and make New Jersey a better place to live. God bless you.
Thank you Senator. Our next speaker is someone who spent his entire career as a police officer in Camden City and put his life on the line day in and day out on behalf of the residents of that city. And he's very well respected, and he eventually was elected to the state legislature as an Assemblyman. He's giving back to his community still as a member of the Assembly. He has helped to pass legislation that we're talking about, the Economic Opportunity Act. He stood with Camden County with the development of a county police force, even though it wasn't a popular thing for him to do, especially as a resident of Camden and a former police officer. But he knew what was right. He knew what the best action was for his residents. And he always puts the interests of his residents first. The Assemblyman Whip Wilson.
Good evening. I'm back, I'm back. Please. As again, workforce in here, in the State Assembly, my committees are your lower bees. My first committee is military vets. I'm a natural for that, I think. I'm a Vietnam veteran. My second committee is law and public safety. I think I'm a natural for that, I think, for police officers. And my third committee is agriculture. I heard that there. And so did I, too, because agriculture. I'm the vice chair of agriculture. A Camden City kid. Agriculture. Now, agriculture is very, I guess, small in a way. I knew about camel soup. And we had a thing in Camden called Tomato Season. In August, tomato, he knows about that, would line up, blocks, blocks, tomatoes going to plant. And some way, somehow, these bastards with tomatoes would just pull off the truck right in front of us. We would have, just have to have salt with us at the time also. So I think the tax limitations passed for that now. I think it all was well. Now, you talk about veterans. They're very close to my heart for various reasons. And a lot of times you hear ideas about passing various bills from folks just like you sitting back there. I had a veteran who served overseas. A lot overseas, you want to enlist to be a police officer. Well, the list expired. I use overseas service, or technically. He came back and went and took the test over again, paid the fee. I said, "That's not fair, that's not right." So I put in place a bill that says, "If you're a police officer or firefighter, you're deployed overseas, and there is an active list, and it expires when you're overseas, when you come back home, the new list will go on right away." So that's the bill that was signed by the government. So for our veterans who are serving us, who are in public safety particularly, that was a big thing for me to do. That's when my first thing I got signed. Now, I get a bill moving. I try and make sure that for the most part I can get support on both sides of ours. I work very hard at doing this. It's sometimes not very successful because other side does not listen all the time. Right now, I'm fussing about tax reductions for senior citizens. Now, think about this. Senior citizens who are actually paying the full width of the school tax, that's not fair. So I've made seniors to look at tax rate for a spin portion of the property tax. That's the way I'm going to do it. Another one I'm talking about, weapons-free school zones. Now, this bill is old. The fact that that is, I was in the city council in Camden. I passed the ordinance, weapons-free school zones. So we have it in Camden City, but of course, the penalty is not as stiff through the state law. I'm going to get this done in the state now. No, it's so difficult. As soon as you say weapons, there are some folks who get upset about taking their guns. This bill is not taking nobody's guns. Matter of fact, I have somebody from LA to call our office complaining. So let me explain the bill. Are you ready? Or no, you're going to take my bill and take your gun from me. This is what the bill is all about. All we're doing is adding another law to existing law that says, if you have a weapon, the word here, illegal weapon, in a school zone, you have committed a crime. Well, the school's not got my gun, and I'm going to the store. You can't do that now. If you're going to the shooting range or hunting, you can go from your home to the range, back to your home, hunting from your home, hunting back. You can't stop no place. Am I correct on that? That's what the law says now. All I'm saying, this law is, if you have a legal weapon within the school zone, there'll be a harsher penalty. Now, the school zone, I told a guy this thing. He said, "Oh, that sounds good to me." I said, "Okay, you support this?" "Oh, I can do that." And I can say, "Yes, I support something like that." But it makes sense to me that we should get this done. So I'm fighting now because something might hit a rumor, maybe we need assembly for something else. Hopefully, I want to get this done before I move on. So it's very difficult sometimes to get these things done. I call them, "It makes sense, it common sense." But I found out in Trenton, Washington, too, common sense ain't common. It isn't. You think things make sense to you, but sometimes other people doesn't make no sense whatsoever. So hopefully, I think that weapons-free school zone passed before I move on to other things. Hopefully. God bless you all, everyone.
Thank you Senator. The next part of the meeting, we turn the meeting over to you for your questions and comments. We will ask you to raise your hand. We have two gentlemen, one to my left, one to my right, and we'll call upon you. Unfortunately, we don't have a microphone in the audience tonight, but you'll be able to state your question, and the appropriate member of the panel will answer. So Anthony, we start on this side. Any questions, comments? This side? There we go. I thought we might see the pregame show there.
Great question. We're trying to actually get a hold of you because we want to ensure the, first of all, there is absolutely no question that the time has taken for our veterans. The treatment is ridiculous. And that's why I'm monitoring a bill to give all veterans choice. If you want to go to the VA hospital or facility, God bless you, you can wait in line and go through that. But why should you have to pass four great hospitals on the way there and a bunch of X-rays where you can go in there and get done in the same day the way Cooper did? That's common sense. Years ago, when the VA was creating a separate system, there was no question about it. It's the finest medical help that you could get, quite frankly, in the world. It's not that way today. And the fact of the matter is, because of that, they just got the benefit or the budget cut even more because they're upset with it, which kind of is backwards logic. They're still using the Amber screen. Remember those computers, the orange ones? That's how far behind they are. You're dealing with what down that Wenzhou and Concord? The one in Biden.
Would you ask the speakers to take a question? Because everybody can hear.
You've got a budget payment system. New Jersey goes out as a way to do quite a bit more than others everywhere else. That is the way the system is set up. But there's some particulars, and that's why we try to get a hold of you because we need to know additional information. So we had Adam back there. So we had Adam back, Adam put your hand up. He is a fellow with our office, just came to us by way of Wounded Warriors. You will not find a better advocate for veterans. He and Leanne do a great job. So would you make sure you touch base and we'll try to get that done. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Duncan. Nice to meet you. Um, I just say, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Jersey is one of the lowest ranked as far as jobs creation. I just want to know, um, I understand you said that you're trying to attract jobs to Jersey, but what initiatives has anyone in the leadership panel here enacted to improve the process of increasing jobs or, and what type of industry is attracted to the state of New Jersey?
Excellent. I gathered, I didn't hear all of it, you were asking, what are we doing to create jobs to have the economy come back? There's no question about, that has been driving me long before I was ever elected to office. Certainly, the state of New Jersey is in a very difficult spot. We're in the older northeast where we have high cost of living because people make a decent wage and have something called a pension. That's a driving force. We're in competition, not only in Philadelphia, Delaware, and New York, but the Rust Belt and certainly the Sun Belt, who create incentive programs to lure companies away from us. And that has been happening at a good pace and certainly was, even became quicker during the great recession that we just went through. That was the basis for the Economic Opportunity Act. Whether you agree or don't agree with the incentive programs, the fact is, that's the game that's being played out there. And if we look back over the course of the last decade, particularly in the city of Camden, Pennsylton, and others, what happens? If you do nothing, you end up losing it. They'll be here, they'll stay here because we have a great workforce, but they pay for a good workforce. So you have to balance that in some way and make a decision to bring those in. So over the course of the last six months roughly, you have heard announcements coming out literally on a weekly basis, but they come through EDA on a monthly basis. Holtech, this is just one company I want to talk about. Dr. Singh came over here as a young boy penniless. Put himself through school, got a scholarship university, Pennsylvania, and built a world-renowned company that deals in power plants. He has a plan out in Pittsburgh that he was going to move down to South Carolina or literally out of the country if it wasn't for the incentives that we set up. And Dr. Singh had taken his plan anywhere in the world. He wanted a workforce from New Jersey that he knew had high skilled trades, but most importantly, had a feeder program for STEM, the science and math. He's developing the next generation of small modular reactors and needs scientists to help him with that. That's just one case. There are, and do you know we build that or make agos here in Camden County? Blue Anger, no, not Blue. As I, one of my first jobs as a younger friend, they made one at a time in a big carousel. They were just awarded a grant because they were going to move out and now they're going to stay and expand their facility, I think it's a $20 million project. So that's what we're doing to try to create that, an incentive to not only keep the companies here, but to build them. Because once they move out of the state, all that income that people were accustomed to is gone. So we're in a battle back and forth with Pennsylvania, New York, Delaware, and certainly the rest of the country. And this is one that actually is making a great difference. Appreciate your question. Will the River Sharks win?
Well, I guess one for free vouchers for next year. I hope I can still use them.
Good question. We'll either get those in the Phillies or whatever. It's a great question. For those of you, social security each year in the third quarter does a calculation for inflation. And over the past 30 years, it has averaged 4.1% a year. That's not happening this year. That's the truth about it. Because the measurements, what they take that on gasoline and fuel and heating is a large part of that. We've done pretty well with that with a 30% drop. So that calculation in there, and this is one year only, they do it in the third quarter of each year. So social security is not getting a bump this year. Over the last 10 years, it's been averaging 2.1%. That money that comes in also affects what you pay for your Medicare. So they can't go above the 70% rate. So depending on your family income and other issues, that rate isn't going to go up unless you're involved with some of the other issues with it. And Free Order of Pelle has the inside track on the River Sharks.
The, whether or not the River Sharks will be there next year has not yet been determined. Cami Cami did purchase the stadium, Campbell's Field. It's also used by Rutgers, by high school teams as well. The River Sharks weren't paying all the debt on that, on that building and so there was a shortfall. And through a series of different foreclosures, the county now owns the property. We're in discussion with other potential users of the property. But if you have vouchers, we'll make sure whoever the end user is honors your vouchers.
Thank you.
All right? Might be the Philadelphia Phillies the way they're running.
I'm a teacher and I worked in Camden for eight years. It's a part of one of this, but as you know, I decided to go back to school with my PhD. I had to take out student loans. Now, I cannot have my student loans. I did sign at least 15 years ago, my daughter was a parent plus loan. Those loans have been paid off. I applied for the student forgiveness program, get part of my loans forgiven, and was told that in two years of investigating, was told that I was not eligible. They said, "Because I had, I don't know." So of course I asked, "What loan?" They said, "Well, they did take a loan out here, I think it was 1997 or so." I said, "No, I did not." I said, "I did sign a plus loan for my daughter." They said, "Oh, that's a wrong. I'm not eligible." Is there some way that people like me who decide to go back to school, to further their education, are not penalized for helping their own children get education?
So, gentlemen to your right, he's my district director, Paul Parker. He taught, and if you can find out the eligibility issues, I'm not sure if you're off top of my head, but they worked with that program 10 years ago. But certainly, that's what we're here for. We have to take care of it. And by the way, thank you very much for teaching the children of Camden. We certainly appreciate it. End of meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Walker. I'd like to thank you guys for being here tonight, I appreciate that. I don't know if this question is for you guys or not. I've been trying to get signs on the corners of the last three streets, Columbus Road going towards Defford Mall, to not block intersections, but it's very difficult. Two times a day, rush hour, rush hour traffic is brutal to getting anything out of our side streets. And I went to a local councilman and mayor, and it seems to be a state rural, and they have no jurisdiction to get the sign with that.
Now Dave, I've known you many, many years. A Giants jersey, really? A Camden Camden kid?
Yes.
So here we're willing to help you.
That's okay. I'm very cordial.
Whoever went to Chubby's Restaurant, West Collins and Heights, that's the Walker family, right there. An institution in Camden, Cami Cami.
But that's, uh... The second, the second part of my question, I just was curious, are there any plans to rebuild Columbus Bridge? And when do you know that'll happen?
Actually, that design is taking place right now and we expect to award the contract next year. So that is happening. And we're also, as I think I mentioned earlier, at the request of the governing body, rebuilding and redesigning the gateway from Defford into Runnymede. So it's going to have a whole great look, Columbus Bridge Road will be done next year. It'll be great. Go Whewls.
Hello, good evening. I'm a veteran, okay? I've been in this township for 30 years. I'm paying $7,800 in taxes. I'm a senior citizen. I have the option, I'm retired for two months. I have the option, am I staying or am I moving? An exchange, it really is. So even though you're giving me $250 off my taxes because I'm a veteran, you're going to jack off with them in the next year anyway, so it really don't make a difference. So how can I possibly stay in my house for 30 years that I've been there and now I got an option to move? An exchange, it really is. The thing is, the County Post has a big thing about it now. If you can't vote for it and help us out with these taxes, even drop them down, you're just going to be out of a job. So it really don't make a difference. So, congratulations. Yeah, I got $7,800 bucks, I don't know if I'm going to retire or I'm going to still be working.
I've never seen so many paying houses in Runnymede. My wife's been there five or six times.
But now I have to say something, now we're just going to see what you guys, people are going to do. The County Post has already got a big thing about it. Sign it. And if you can't help us out, then we have to have you go. An exchange, I'm sorry to say.
So, so I can tell you, speak for the county level. At the county level, we've been keeping taxes as low as possible. We've increased them less than 2% over the last three years.
They have a 2% tax.
Well, actually, it does go beyond that. But what I can tell you is we look at every line item every year, do what we can to provide the best services we can at the price we can. So on the county, on your tax bill, the smallest portion is probably your municipality and your county. The biggest portion are the school taxes. And the driving force behind why property taxes are so high in New Jersey is the way we pay for our schools. And, you know, it's a very, very regressive tax system because our schools are paid by property taxes, which are based not on your income, but on the value of your home. And there's not a more regressive way to tax people, quite frankly. So frankly, we can do all we can at the county level, and I know that this municipality does a great job in trying to keep spending low. But for us to provide the basic minimum services that we provide, including the jail, maintaining roads, maintaining 911, there's a certain cost that go along with that. And we're at a point where any drastic reduction, any further drastic reduction in, in spending by the county will severely impact services. A few years ago, we, and this wasn't an easy thing to do, we laid off 250 county employees. 250 people who lived in Camden County, we laid them off because of the recession, revenues were not keeping up with expenses, and it was a very tough decision. We had to do it. And as a result, we're down to really the minimum size of government that we can have and still provide the county services. So really, the change needs to be made at a much bigger level. And to me, the change is not relying on property taxes to pay for schools, but to rely on taxes where there's a much more progressive way to tax people who have the income and not tax people based solely on their property, which they own forever. And you want your property to appreciate in value, it doesn't necessarily mean you can afford to pay higher taxes, so it's a state problem. How's it going to change? You know, there was one governor who changed it. I happen to know him pretty well, he was from this area. And when he did that, and he took the burden off of property taxes and put it on something different, he was voted out of office. So I think there's a real fear amongst folks to do that, but it has to change in 20, quite frankly. So I don't disagree with you. It should be based on income. That would take a change in the constitution of the state of New Jersey. Yeah, it would take an actual constitutional convention to change a constitution which dictates... A lot of them are Republicans. No, I'm playing assistant. I, so I would say, over the last six to seven years, South Jersey has gotten more than it's ever gotten out of the state of New Jersey, thanks to the leadership of the people sitting at this table, quite frankly. The Economic Opportunity Act of 2013 was designed specifically to benefit South Jersey. Until that act, all those benefits and taxing incentives that were creating jobs, they were all in North Jersey. They were all in North Jersey. For the first line, we in South Jersey can take the benefit of some of those incentives and create jobs. So we have a very complex system by design to suggest that nothing is being done. There are lots and lots of changes, but you have to make a tough decision. You want to cut your tax rate for your housing? Biggest driver of teachers, policemen. I think they do a pretty damn good job. They like to take care of their family. So how do we take care of that? You have to say to the young lady over there, "We're going to cut your salary by 30%, because that's what they pay in South Carolina." We have 537 municipalities. Over the course of the last decade, two have merged. That means you have a police chief, a police chief, a police chief. These all add up. There are drivers to this that we can easily do, but you have to make a decision collectively. We were looking at Berlin Borough Township, couldn't put that together. Everybody likes to have their police chief. I understand that. Mayor wants to be able to call the chief up and say, "We got a problem, let's go fix it." You don't feel the same if you're in a regional course. The reality's a little bit different. I read all sudden papers from the Gannett. They did a pretty good job of laying it out. But us collectively, citizens, have to make those tough decisions. Pensions, huge driver. The investments aren't coming back the way they used to. We had to fill those back and they're not filled to where they should be either. These are all tough questions. On top of that, the federal government. Because what happens is, New Jersey, we're competing for businesses, for residents. So when they start driving it down, this started probably about 70 years ago, when the South really started booming with lower cost wages. Then it went because of NAFTA, Mexico, and Central America. Now we're in a global competitive market. The, all the rules for blue collar jobs like us got cut in half. That's the real reality. Manufacturing of RCA. I live in the building where my dad's first job was, down at the Vicar. They used to employ thousands of people. New York's shipyard had 24,000 people inside there. The manufacturing isn't here because we're all getting undercut by overseas. That's the true driver of what's going on. That's why I voted against... That's why I voted against the Trade Act. This is not good for America, because we're not competing on a fair level. So, when we have these questions, we're not here because we want to be popular. I wanna be able to help the kids that are going to school, our next generation. Quite frankly, they're falling further and further behind. I wanna make sure those jobs are there. I've represented people who were out of work for almost three years. They went through their life savings, went through their pension and annuity, and fell into disrepair. Fell into drugs and alcohol, killed themselves because they didn't have a job. Believe me, I know what it's like. I've seen it, and I live it every day. And that's why I'm fighting so hard to make sure that our economy comes back. Where, I'm sorry? Let me tell you, the number-one driver is called the Armed Services of America. That's where, that's where the vast majority, Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, big drivers, what they call the entitlements, number-one driver. I couldn't hear you. We all do. Now, let me give you, here is a nice, simple way to address Social Security. Does anybody, I remember years ago, we used to top out, we think we had a little rain somewhere in November? I think it's, uh, one-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one-hundred, one-hundred-and-eighteen this year? And then you get that little rain, right? Donald Trump gets it the first week and doesn't have to pay anymore. I have a very simple solution. Take the caps off, it's only helping the millionaires. That will fix Social Security for the next thirty years. Because there are enough to start coming back on Social Security disability also, for those who need it worse. For which? Okay, great question. This, actually, this is very good to have this discussion. He says, "Why not have means testing for Social Security?" How many people have paid in Social Security over ten years? Twenty years? Okay. If you means test that, you make over thirty thousand. Take this, move it half, say thank you for your contribution. If you means tested, half the people in this room will probably be over that line. They're making enough through pensions or whatever savings they have. That's the means testing you're talking about. That's what means testing is. You're, we're getting to the same spot. If you raise it for millionaires, you're not raising enough income. There's not that many millionaires that makes any measurable difference for whether Social Security lives or dies, because... You hear about the one percenters? That's why they call them one percenters, there's only one percent out there. So if you means test them, they cut them off. So great, you got one percent out of the way. You still left with ninety-nine percent, the math doesn't work. Great, thank you. Bill Warne did a nice job there. It is like, he lives on today. Well, we're not here to build, beat up Bill Warne, because he has given back to this community. We can go all around Camden County for things he has given back. So whether or not he deserves Social Security, the guy's not here to defend himself, he's dead, so leave it. Do we have another question?
My name is Lori, I'm a running president. Thank you first for having me for this for us. Um, I live here in a whole different direction, and I do apologize, this is probably a little bit over personal. It may not have to do with a lot of people. This is my nephew, Galli, and this is my sister, Joelle. They all said that we're lying. Um, the end of May, right around Memorial Day, Joelle's husband had a heart attack and passed away. So, five months later, my mind's not working, the math was, my nephew has had his medical insurance taken away from him. The reason that my sister was given is because he receives an income, which is, yes, which is his survivor benefit. Yes. So, while my sister, she has an older daughter who is perfectly healthy, so my sister and my niece do have medical insurance as well as survivor benefits. She gets survivor benefits, but no medical insurance. Because her safety has an income. He has five specialists. Both of them are neurologists, endocrinologists, pulmonologists, specialty dentist. He is overdue, he's on lifeline medication. The endocrinologist won't keep giving him prescriptions if she can't get them in. With no medical insurance, these doctors, being the specialists that they are, you know, are just too much for us, you know, in my chart, I call for help. Um, I'm a little... But, you know, I'm just, we don't know where to go.
Tell me. There are a couple of programs, I'm not sure what we're going to be talking here. But let's talk about means testing right there. Because that's called a means testing. It's called income. These are difficult questions that nobody likes to pay for taxes. And you wanna make sure that there's not another nine left. So we invest billions and trillions of dollars making sure that we're safe. We can always cut a billion dollars out, and we'll probably get through it. But what level are you willing to sacrifice any of it to cut that? That's a tough, tough decision. So when we talk about means testing, yeah, it helps us, but there's also the human face right here. It's not a means question.
Hey, I have a disability, my wife works. She, she looks like everything was, we thought. We have a qualify for, uh, for body care. Says we're going to write, I, I have a qualify for things. I have a heart attack six months ago. Can I, you might, at my best?
Can I ask you, uh, when, do you have children, for the children?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, do they go to schools and receive good educations? We want him, I have a grandson in high school. I understand that, but while someone else paid for your child's good education through their tax dollars, we then, we love the human race. We then ask you to do the same for our children. Our children will do the same for the next generation. Unfortunately, that's what it is.
This is great for an illustration for the issue. It literally come up every day, 'cause it's not that much of a thing here in Trenton. Now, there is no, well, he may not sit there saying, "Let's screw the little guy." It's actually the opposite. Regulation, you hear it day in and day out, how it's choking us. Well, New Jersey, Governor Floria, who is a congressman, did Superfund Act. Why? Because there are places like Itzbrad, right? One of the highest areas around in terms of old lead paint. When wealth back down in the Boston City, they dump regulatory waste. That might cost money. And for anybody who's elected official, forget that. Anybody who wants a budget at home. What are we gonna spend? We gonna go after their tonight? We gonna buy the kids some shoes? This happens day in and day out. We're no different, but the numbers are much larger. We are literally driving, I got great friends on the other side of the aisle. Maybe a little different on the, you wanna go about it. The dysfunction is still going down. It's quite different than any other time in our history. And we'll tell you number one reason. You're driving people either way because of the lack of campaign finances. When that Supreme Court decision came out saying corporations begin, which means individual, if I'm a multi-millionaire, dropping a couple millions, nothing to make. And that's the problem right now. Everybody's afraid of getting primed and everything. Nobody wants to tell you that, but that's a real driver here. If they come up and make compromises, Eric Cantor was the number-two guy in the Republican. He got wiped out last year. I got sworn in with, uh, who replaced him. Compromise is a dirty word. And that's the problem to fix the campaign finances. None of this wall permit movement changed nationally. It's remarkable. There was a series in the A-Part Center where all money comes off. We should diffuse it, because it's the one percenters. That's the truth.
I've been in Martha. And, uh, we are actually in the process of getting information for you. So we will be talking to you because we know the, uh, to the kind of, uh, uh, persons who support your, and to my office, as a senator. We all, all the offices are working together to get the information. We also call the office, and I see the noise, the noise. The office, uh, are totally perfect. So there are actually, all of the offices and nonprofits and nonprofits are working together to find an answer and to see what program we can find for your side. So we're working on it, okay?
Every regulation has a reason behind it. It's true, because somebody was trying to game it. And you have to put it in, stop. Four-hundred-dollar toilet seats, remember, Air Force? Somebody tried to game it, and you get them in regulation. It's fine, you... It was, oh, it was an A B, I'm sorry. Next question is over here.
My name is Amy, I'm on our list, I'm assuming, and that, uh, I'm actually the official reporter right now. Um, and I want to go back to a question that was, that happened over here, which was regarding jobs. And I agree with you, the crazy jobs, but I think my problem is bringing the jobs in, and jobs are not being guaranteed to residents in Camden. They're not for residents in Pennsauke, they're not for the, and I think that some of the companies do require that they hire a certain percentage of...
They suck, they suck. Let's go back twenty years when these centers began in New York, in Jersey City. Most of Jersey City companies came from New York with the people. We have to be careless. There's fifty towns in the first district. I have people in Camden, no one I love. And I'll have to take orders just as much as I will Runnymede or any other county. But you know how many people live in my network in Cherry Hill? A lot. But I'm in Cherry Hill, I'm a Wood Cherry Hill people. Pennsauke does a great job. Only Pennsauke people can work there. We started Hard Hats, or how was the Hard Hats? And pre-president program, walking brandy, this came up. See, we have these pips of power in the eye of the wolf. Anybody probably traced their roots back to Camden at some point in our history. We all have people generally come from there. We all love them. But the fact of the matter is, it has had its challenges. And if you wanna continue to repeat the same behavior, hit the same hard laptops, I'm not gonna be part of it. We have to make changes that's unprecedented in New Jersey history. Public safety, education, opportunity, hasn't happened in your lifetime. Now it is. I'm very much in favor of it, and I applaud those who wanna come into New Jersey with this.
I'll sign that, I'm coming out to mention, and put that to us.
That's why we're here.
I am, uh, sorry, who are you, independent voter? Three-twenty-two? Six-nine. My question goes back to property taxes. Nobody likes them, self-deprecating. Election after election, politician after politician, you stand up and say, "We're gonna do this for you, we're gonna do that." While Courier-Post had a nice article, everybody read it, they all got fired up. There were several words that were left out in the, "Home rule." Home, does anybody know what home rule is? You got your own word of education? Who do you think controls your property taxes? Not these guys.
Six-hundred-and-twelve words of education in New Jersey, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven municipalities.
That's where it comes from. Unless the five-hundred-plus districts, you think they can change it?
But we work together. This is a great discussion.
Our federal minimum wage expense is now seven dollars and twenty-five cents. In fourteen, in New Jersey, it went up to eight thirty-eight. But, that's it, you get jobs. I'm a fifty-seven-year-old person who's been out of work. Let's put it this way, past the seven-year point. I find that every time I go apply for work, whether it's minimum wage or not, what do I have? I got a sixteen-year-old getting a damn job. I don't get hired, it's age discrimination. In this state alone, there's a lot of people, and I gotta say this, there are people in this room that got relatives who are out of work, who've been out of work since two-thousand-six crisis. That's when I lost my job. And, hey, it's not easy. You bring jobs into New Jersey, these jobs in New Jersey, these employers sit back and they say, "Oh, but we don't wanna raise the minimum wage because, well, if we do, we're gonna have to pay more money." So therefore, we're gonna hire.
That's why we put it on the map. We got clear of COVID, and we put it on the map, and now each year, we're gonna...
A congress member who says, "Congress needs to say, to stand, to stand up and say, "Your constituents are standing to say, 'Hey, look, your constituents are saying this too. "We can't live on minimum wage.'" Eight dollars and thirty-eight cents does not pay for race, does not pay to feed people, does not pay anything. This country needs to get down to a point that says this. If you are between the ages of eight, of sixteen and eighteen years old, and you're living in the parents' house, they're paying all the bills, and if you're working, okay, it's still a problem. But, the rest of us who have to work and have to pay all our bills, we cannot live on minimum wage. We need to live on a living wage of at least seventeen dollars a month.
Well, listen, I wanna thank you for that, but let's make two points. Number one, age discrimination, like the state and federal, is illegal, which have touched with Department of Labor, federal, state, depending on your particular issue. But let's talk about the eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one-year-old. We're not gonna go and start saying, "Gee, mommy, you're good, you're good." Not here. They're the ones who fight for us every day. They're the ones who join the army. They're the ones who join the Navy. So I don't wanna start going after the millennials.
I worked thirty years of my life.
Man, let, you had a chance, let me have it. It's not about dividing the tongue. We're all in this together. And I thank those young men and women, because they're the ones who are...
So, so, so what? Unless, so the military, yes, I have a duty to serve in the military. My father was in the military better. I thank them. I go out like that, I see him, I see him in the street, at the, at the bus station, I walk up to him, I don't desert. I give him a big hug and say, "Thank you very much." I challenge everybody to say that to the veterans.
By the way, so, I started a living wage campaign fifteen years ago when the city came.
Okay, but I said, I'd say, so...
A living wage, a living wage campaign. That's not, but I'll tell you now, fifteen years later, I'm a little bit older, Libs throw. We put in that wage that's so high here. All those in seven-seven, we had to break off these here, start the work, yeah, so. Right? You're a contractor, low bid, that's what we're going into. So it's all the balance in there. But the best way to crush your issue is get the economy going to raise everything back. So we have time for two more questions, and what do we do after this?
Hi, I'm the president, I'm, um, in the article that everybody's been talking about, because Camden County, her dubious distinction is being number eighteen in highest county taxes in the nation. And I was wondering if somebody could explain why you are so far up there?
I, I don't remember reading eighteen in the nation.
Yeah, and then this year, it's been worth number twenty-three, and now it's eighteen.
You know, the driving force, uh, behind county taxes, really, uh, over sixty percent of our budget is spent on public safety. And what that is, is the county jail, nine-one-one, Sheriff's Department, Department of Corrections. That's over sixty percent of our budget. We are working very hard right now, and actually, some, some legislation passed by the folks here, the Bail Reform Act. We are a pilot county program. The Bail Reform Act is intended on keeping those offenders who are not violent and charged with some low offense out of jail. If we're able to reduce our jail population by the amount we think we're about to reduce it right now, we're at about fourteen-hundred, Ross? Fifteen-hundred, up to fifteen-hundred. By the way, our jail's rated for nine-hundred. By the way, our jail's rated for 900? Okay. This Bail Reform Act, these three folks right here were very instrumental in passing. We think we'll be able to get our jail population down to 700? That's conservative? That will drastically reduce our expenses. So when the Congresswoman talks about entitlements and defense, we're on a different level. We have a jail, we have a sheriff's department, we have 911, which, by the way, we are one of the few counties in the state of New Jersey, perhaps the only one, to have a completely regional 911 system. So we, you know, we as a county pay, yes, you are, sir. You wanna disagree with me, that's fine. Okay. So, and our 911 is very highly rated, it does announce the new job, but over 60% of our budget is related directly to public safety.
Yes, what it does, you have a legal weapon. In the school zone, you're charged, that'd be a new charge. Right now, you're charged with a legal weapon, too. This is a legal weapon within the school zone, that's additional charges. So you'd be charged right now having a legal weapon. But this is an extra charge, having a legal weapon in the school. And by school zones, current, not just schools, towns, recreations, parks, dead gas stations, libraries.
But it's in the reality, you don't know they have a gun, and so they've actually tried to use it, so...
That's usually the case, anyway.
No, so...
You don't know until...
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna go to school today, or I'd be absolutely...
That's how the law, that's how the law works. That's what I'm trying to change, that. It's an additional charge.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. We certainly had some interesting conversation. I also want to thank our Congressman, our Senator, our Speaker. Before we leave, there are plenty of resources here tonight from Camden County to the state of New Jersey, the Economy's Office, the Veterans Affairs Office of Camden County, Camden County College. So please take advantage of the resources. Go Eagles, thank you, Mark, for hosting us and coming out.